Okay, everybody. Good afternoon and welcome to our Cabinet meeting for September. First of all, do we have any apologies, please?
We've received apologies from councillor Packer.
Thank you. Let's move on to item two then. Are there any declarations of interest on any items on the agenda, please? No. Item three, I'm not aware of any public questions or petitions or any questions to Cabinet members. So we'll move on to item five, which is the minutes. Can we accept these as a correct record, please? Agreed. Proposed a seconded. Thank you. We'll now move on to item six on page 19. That's the Norwich Western Link planning application consultation response, which is in my name. So I'll introduce it. Yeah, Beth, Ben and Sarah are here. Welcome. The Cabinet, this paper sets out our response to the county council's consultation on the proposals for the Norwich Western Link, a 3.8 mile dual carriageway to complete an orbital dual carriageway around the city, in effect, linking the northern distributor road and the southern bypass. None of the proposed route would pass through the city of Norwich, and we are therefore not formal consultees. However, we do have the right to respond to the planning application, and given the gravity of the matter, we are proposing to do that, and this is our proposed response. That response will be consistent with our previous decision not to support the Western Link, based on criteria we had set, and because it is not supported by sufficiently convincing evidence that it is a critical part of an environmentally progressive and deliverable transport strategy for the city, which delivers these criteria, considerable air quality and decongestion benefits for the city, a comprehensive investment package in public transport, cycling and walking commensurate with the investment being proposed for the Western Link, the completion of complementary schemes before the Norwich Western Link is completed, a political mechanism to ensure governance is in place to ensure these commitments are implemented, and then finally evidence that wildlife and landscape impacts of the scheme can be satisfactorily mitigated. For the avoidance of doubt, the report makes clear that the city council will not support any proposal for the use of the pooled funding resource of the Greater Norwich Growth Board to assist with the delivery of the scheme. Colleagues, there is so much I could say about the shortcomings of this proposed scheme and the inadequacies of the arguments used to try to support it. There is a damaging carbon emissions, which this one single scheme would reverse 16.5% of the county council's own emission reduction targets for transport. Then there is the gross imbalance of the county council planning to spend between £569 million and £779 million on road schemes, while planning to spend over £73 million of public money on sustainable transport schemes in the Transport for Norwich area over the same time period. This is a financial bias in favour of road building of up to 11 to 1. There is the cancellation of traffic management schemes in the city for purely ideological reasons and not achieving any short-term disadvantage for drivers, such as cancelling the connecting the lanes project in the city centre and the Quetzal La Bus Lane. There is the progressive freezing out of the city from such decisions or even meaningful consultations since the abolition of the Highways Agency Committee, so that we now have in effect no influence on transport decisions made for the city by a Tory County Council administration, which has no councillors in the city. Finally, there is the impact on air quality in the city and the impact on wildlife in the Wentstone Valley. This is all set out in the report in great detail. Colleagues, there are so many evidenced and very strong reasons for the city council not to support the proposed Norwich Western Link, and I commend this report to you. Ben and Sarah, would you care to add anything? Colleagues, are there any comments or questions from Cabinet members? We all seem content, so I'll move. James, did you want to come in first?
Yeah, thank you. Just a comment rather than a question. Fully support the paper here and I think just picking up on the point about the changes that have happened since we lost the ability to have an influence over our own transport in the city. It does seem to me to be quite ridiculous that we have a single county council Cabinet member who can take transport decisions unilaterally on behalf of nearly a million people in this county, and we need to work together to change that when the electoral cycle allows for it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more. Thank you, James. Lucy?
Thank you. I'm really glad to see the stance we've taken on this. As you know, it's something we've worked hard for for a long time, and the proposed road was, as you say, really destructive to nature and the environment. And I'd hope that all MPs, local MPs, including the MP for Norwich North, would actually come out and state that publicly, as the Norwich South MP has done, in order that a really shocking waste of funds can stop and some constructive solutions can be put in place instead. I wanted to ask what we as a council want to see as a Plan B. Have we done thinking about that for the area once the road finally fails or the plan finally fails?
I mean, I think there are alternatives to the Western Link, and we've talked about this at length. And one of the issues, one of the arguments is all the rat running that takes place to the west of the city. And it seems to me that the amount of money that the county council are planning on spending on this scheme in order to deal with some rat running in the west of the city is totally out of all proportion. I think there's some relatively, compared to the Western Link, inexpensive infrastructure changes that could be put in place in those areas to reduce the rat running, for example. But also if that money is freed up, we would want to see that spent on sustainable transport, a modal shift in the city. That's what we'd be arguing for if there was a forum in which we could argue for it. But of course, that's been taken away from us. And as you say, James, a single Cabinet member is making transport decisions with very little accountability on behalf of almost a million people. And so we would like to get back that ability to have that influence. Okay, if there are no other questions, shall we go to a vote on the recommendation? So can I see all those in favour? Thank you. That's unanimous. Moving on then to... Oh, big pardon. It was Emma seconded. Item seven is the corporate, and thank you, Ben and Sarah, for attending. Good to see you. Item seven is the corporate performance report for quarter one 2024-2025. That's the first quarter of this year, of course, and the key performance indicators in this report have been carried over from the previous corporate plan and are under review as part of the new business planning process. For the purpose of this report, the existing KPIs have been mapped to the new priorities in the community-led plan 2024 to 2029. We are Norwich. For the reporting period 2024 to 2025, information across corporate performance, finance and risk elements will be presented to Cabinet as three quarterly reports and an annual report. This report sets out progress for quarter one and covers the period 1st of April 2024 to the 30th of June 2024. Overall, performance remains steady with positive movement across a majority of indicators. A breakdown of all indicators for quarter one can be found at appendix A of the report. There are significant improvements in four KPIs this quarter, which are: One, the percentage of household waste sent for reuse, recycling and composting, reporting on previous quarter, is above the target of 40% and is notably above the equivalent performance reported in quarter one last year. Secondly, the percentage of corporate complaints responded to within stated timescales is 10 percentage points higher than the same quarter last year, which is the highest performance to date. Three, a review of customer contact through digital channels has taken place to ensure all online systems are included in the KPI calculation, which has led to a significant improvement this quarter. And four, the volume of freedom of information requests has increased by 7% compared to the same quarter last year, but performance is consistent across this measure. Areas where we are below target and we're taking steps to improve in performance include five KPIs that have reached a level where we will intervene and action is required to bring them back on target. An explanation of performance can be found in the section titled Overview of Performance Measures for Quarter One, but include areas such as relet time of council homes, the percentage of council housing rent collected, and the number of homeless households living in temporary accommodation. The recommendation is that Cabinet note progress on the key performance indicators for quarter one. So are there any questions from colleagues on the report? Beth?
Just a couple of things I wanted to...
Yeah, sure. Excellent. Thank you, Beth. Adam?
Thank you. In relation to average number of days taken to process new HB claims, you'll see that's amber for the first quarter, 20 days against the target of 19.5. At the end of P4, that now has reduced to 18.5. So that is now below target. The reasons for this being amber as we move towards, as we've moved towards full migration from HB to UC, accepting pensioners and those in temporary and exempt accommodation, we've seen pressure on that KPI due to the complexity of temporary and exempt accommodation HB claims. As they're continuing to make a significantly higher percentage of new claims going forwards, we'll need to carefully monitor that target. Also, in the first quarter of the financial year, the corporate year, the number of new... Oh, sorry. Let me just find my place. We've been dealing with a number, we're clearing the backlog of older new claims, as such, between the end of P1 and the end of P3. The number of new HB claimants with complex cases waiting between 22 and 40 days for determination reduced from approximately 175, and the number waiting 41 to 80 days reduced from approximately 40 to 20. So that's the reasons why it's amber. And as I said, at the end of P4, that had reduced to 18.5. So that is now year-to-date within target.
Thank you very much, Adam. Are there any other questions or comments from colleagues? Or Beth? Yes.
So actually, it's not really minor, but there are a number of minor works. Also, upgrades haven't been taken up previously by tenants. So there's going to be some work around exploring why people haven't had their kitchens or bathrooms, why they haven't participated in that programme previously, so that we're not then waiting for it to be void to then do all that work at once. So I think we're constantly looking to unpick where we can improve that number.
Thank you for that. That's very helpful, Beth. Okay, are there any questions from opposition leaders? Lucy has one, yes?
Thank you. Yeah, it was on that, actually, the average relet time of council homes in days excluding major works. That is actually so, has stuck at 79 since quarter four, and there's been no improvement. And in the past, it has reached up 95, if you remember. And the report does acknowledge that the performance is below target and says it continues to be monitored carefully. But you've kind of alluded to it a bit, but it'd be interesting to know what other, what work is really being done to shift that, because it's so static.
It was actually something we were discussing, I think, my last briefing. We're trying to unpick one, as I've said, we've had a significant number of properties being handed back to us that have been occupied for 20, 30 years, some months. We're talking about about 50% of the properties, I think, were around those kind of occupancy length of relet. So actually, there's... I think we've got to unpick, and that's a piece of work that is going to be undertaken, why people... And sometimes you can understand that particularly if they're older tenants, because a lot of these were returned to us either due to someone dying or going into residential or nursing care. So actually, maybe they didn't want those improvements made because of their age, that's the thing. But actually, how do we engage more and make sure that we're not needing to do those kind of upgrade works as part of the voids process, that they're more part of the general cycle? And looking at what are the barriers to people taking those up? So the more things we can get done, also looking at are there scope for us to be going in doing surveys earlier if we know that something is potentially going to be handed back, that sort of thing. So it's looking at every opportunity to get more information earlier, be able to plan works earlier. But it's very much something we're unpicking piece by piece. So, but I think it is important to acknowledge it's a problem that is not something not just we're facing. And I think it is looking at who's been occupying our properties and actually that is, there is a sort of aging population in terms of people who are handing properties back that we're really noticing at the moment. But we continue to explore every opportunity to shorten that, be it by one day at a time, literally. We'll unpick everything we can.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, so we have the recommendation on page 43. Let me find it again. So the recommendation is that Cabinet review progress on the key performance indicators for this quarter. Are we happy to do that? New proposal, seconded? All those in favour? Thank you. Let's move on now to the corporate risk register for quarter one. This is councillor Kendrick, please.
This report provides an update on the council's corporate risk registers based on the position for quarter one of the financial year 2425, up to the 30th of June of 24th. The report recommends, asks the Cabinet to note the identified risks and direction of travel for each risk. The corporate risk register is shown at appendix A with a separate report included in the exempt agenda. Position at the end of quarter four, that is, up to the 31st of March of this year, was reported to Cabinet in July. There have not been significant changes in the council's risk profile at the end of this quarter. The environment in which the council operates remains relatively high risk as the financial environment is challenging both in terms of economic and funding position. As a result, the corporate risk register will continue to be monitored and progress reports to the Cabinet.
Thank you. So are there any comments or questions from Cabinet colleagues? No? Okay. Any questions from opposition leaders? No? Okay. Oh, there is.
Thank you. Just interested to know, it says the council's in the process of updating its risk management policy to ensure that risks are properly managed and there is adequate guidance. And what you see is the weaknesses in the current policy and what updates are being made or being planned?
So effectively, we're looking to just develop the process that we've got in place already, which is relatively straightforward in terms of looking at impact against the likelihood of a risk occurring and making that slightly more nuanced and sophisticated so that we're able to get underneath some of the risks in a better way going forwards.
James?
Actually, yeah, sorry, I did have a question, because it relates, it relates to appendix A, but I'm not going to talk about the content of appendix A, but more the principle about why we need to have exempt risks and why... Because the document that I'm looking at, that the public can't look at, says nothing in terms of the actual risk, in terms of the headings for that. And I don't understand why that, those risks and their score need to be exempt from the public when they don't actually divulge any information to the public other than the risk figure. Thank you.
That's a good question. Alastair, would you like to respond to that?
Again, this is about looking at things in terms of how we're able to ensure that we're not setting hairs running. So we might reflect that there is a risk in relation to something that could then start to sort of create some speculation about what that might entail, as opposed to us being able to be clear about it being managed on a reasonable basis within the confines of the council as an organisation.
Thank you. I kind of get that from a detail point of view, but I'm, I'll take it under advisement, but I'm less convinced about simply seeing a risk score for that. But I have a history of prodding the bear when it comes to things being in the public. So I will continue to ask those questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, James. I'm going to go and ponder that. Thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, we've got the recommendation on page 61. The Cabinet notes the identified risks and the direction of travel. Did anyone actually want to go below the line with this when it comes to it, just so that we know? No? Okay, good. So can I see all those in favour? Thank you very much. And that was seconded by Emma. So we'll move on to the quarter one budget report, page 67. It's back to you, Paul.
Thank you very much, Chair. The council has a history of effective budget management, as demonstrated by managing within the budgeted resources for a number of years. As at the end of the first quarter of the financial year 2425, this is further reflected in this report, which reflects a breakeven outturn forecast. In recent years, council has benefited from higher than budgeted returns on investment income. However, this is unlikely to occur in the current year as budgets have become more closely aligned with market rates. As always, there are emerging budget pressures across the council which are being reviewed and analysed, both in terms of the root cause and options mitigation. These emerging pressures are primarily arising as a consequence of external events, including market prices and inflation. The outcome of this work will be reflected as appropriate in the future reports. But at this time, at this point in time, the robustness of the budget is being sustained. So I would propose the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this recommendation on page 67. So are there any comments or questions from colleagues on the report? If not, are there any questions from opposition leaders? Lucy?
Yeah, thank you for the report. Just wanted to note really and ask a question around the interim spending. There's been 160% increase in spending on interims over the past three years, interim positions, so that 1.492466 in 2021 to 2664211 in 2122 to nearly 4 million in 2223. There's a sort of long-term lack of grip on that spend from this administration, which is concerning. And it does have a chaotic effect on staff morale, I have to say. So the report does mention the need for the use of interim staff to maintain appropriate levels of expertise and to support service delivery, which is accepted, recognising that there are circumstances where specialist knowledge, skills and experience can support the delivery of outcomes and priorities. There's also a need to ensure that value for money can...
A question or a speech?
Yeah, so I'm just reading out a bit of the report for context, if that's helpful, but I can cut that if you like. So it does say that to this end, work is being undertaken to ensure that this balance is effectively maintained alongside work to develop opportunities to support permanent staff to develop and broaden their knowledge and skills in line with the challenges and needs of Norwich City Council, which is good. And there are clear challenges to ensuring continuity when there's interim turnover, which aren't mentioned in the report. Could you provide details of the work being undertaken that's mentioned to get a grip on the steeply rising cost and the impacts of it and the total current cost of interims?
So the first thing is that you can only cast questions about data in the report. So the historic data that you've quoted isn't actually in the report, so just to make that bit be clear about that.
So I'll just ask the question then, could you provide details of the work being...
Don't worry, you've already said it, so it's a bit late now, isn't it? I mean, the first thing I would say, I absolutely refute that this administration doesn't have a grip on interim costs. This is an issue within the market for councils up and down the country. We are not alone in grappling with being able to appoint good quality substantive staff. And you all know, because we tried recently to employ an interim on regular terms and conditions, and that person clearly was not able to begin for various reasons, which I won't go into. But that was very unfortunate, Lucy, I thought. So when you compare us with other councils, we're not an outlier. And so to criticise the administration for not having a grip when we're no different to many, many other councils and how they deal with these issues, I think is disingenuous and unfair. In terms of work being done to get a grip on it, there's an awful lot of work being done to try and improve. And we have made significant improvements recently, and we've reduced the number of interims that we have. We've reduced the cost on them, but we still struggle, like many, many councils do, as I think you well know. So I'm happy for you to be briefed on the work that we're doing, but I do take exception to the implications in the question. Okay, so there are no other questions or comments. We've got the recommendation on page 67. Do we have a proposal and a second for that? You've already proposed it, absolutely. Is there a second? Anybody? Adam? Okay, thank you. All those in favour? Thank you very much. That's unanimous. So moving on, we now move on to the Treasury Management Review and Outturn for 2023-2024. That is councillor Kendrick again. It's your show tonight, Paul.
Yes, well, thank you very much, Chair. Well, as you know, most of this coming, I waked this afternoon, and while I was telling everyone I had to remain on the Coke, Coca-Cola, I should say, was it? Yeah, Coca-Cola, not the other kind of Coke.
I wonder what you were doing with that credit card?
In order to present obviously what is the highlight of these cabinet meetings, which is the Treasury Management Review and Outturn for the financial year 2324. This report provides details of Treasury Management activity and that outturn position for financial year 2324, and highlights the council's Treasury Management strategy and policies, which have previously been approved by the council. The report was considered by the Treasury Management Committee on July 16th. We noted and endorsed the report for consideration at Cabinet and council. The report recommends and asks the Cabinet to note the Treasury Management activities be undertaken in the financial year up to the 31st of March of this year, and recommends it for approval by the council. The report also asks the Cabinet to note the change in table 5.9 in the 2425 Treasury Management Strategy. The council has adopted a set for go-to-practice for Treasury Management in the public sector and the Prudential Code of Capital Finances in local authorities, and operates its Treasury Management activities in compliance with these codes. These codes base responsibility on members to review and scrutinise Treasury Management policy and activity against prudential indicators. This report sets out a range of indicators and highlights that there are no breaches to alert you to. Council remains significantly internally borrowed, and cash balances available from investment will continue to enable the council to maximise its returns. In the current interest rate, environment interest rates are now forecast to start before, and the recent base cut of 0.25%, quarter percent in other words, in August, is the first of many predicted by the market to occur in the coming months. The council's Treasury Management activity continues to be monitored against a wider economic backdrop in accordance with the linked asset services and the council's Treasury Management strategy. I am pleased that this report illustrates the positive management of our cash balances, and would endorse the recommendations to propose it for approval by the full council. So I would propose that recommendation.
Thank you very much for that, Paul. Right, are there any questions or comments from Cabinet members on the Treasury Management Review and Outturn for 2023-24? If there are none, I'll go to opposition leaders. So are there any questions or comments?
Yes, just one. Just, it looks like. Building societies currently, and that has been in the past, just interested to know why that was. It's probably a matter of rates and things, but just be interesting to know because I understand building society to sometimes be a slightly more ethical banking channel.
So you're, you're correct. We haven't got any directly with building societies at the moment. What we look to do is maximise the benefit and the return for the council on our investments. What we have managed to do though, in terms of ethical and, and social investments is we've now, in terms of our short-term investments, twenty percent of those are with money market funds that will seek to invest in socially responsible funds. That has been achieved with also making sure that we are getting the maximum interest earned on those investments. So we're trying to blend that approach and, and deliver the maximum benefit on both sides.
Thank you. Okay, there are no other questions or comments. Then we'll move to the recommendation on page seventy-seven. Paul's proposals. Do we have a second, anybody? Yeah, Emma, I saw. All those in favour? Thank you. It's unanimous. Just to check, when we get there, does anyone want to go to the below the line section of the report? Anyone got any comments they want to raise? I'm just ticking them off so we know when we get below the line, how much we've got to do. Okay. Good. Thank you. Let's move on then to page ninety-five. And, and this is Beth.
Thank you. So this is the latest piece of work that's come as part of what has been a very successful period of improvement within this service area. You may remember when we had the safer Norwich strategy coming forward. And this is basically the latest stage really of this. Really pleased to bring this. This is, we have a responsibility round ASB, not just as a social landlord, but also in terms of environmental protection, and also as part of the wider Norfolk County Community Safety Partnership. And I think it's very important at this point to highlight that we've, just as we talked earlier about transport being taken out of our hands and being looked at on a countywide level, we've kind of done the opposite of actually saying, community safety needs to be looked at on a Norwich level. And we need to be thinking about the concerns that really affect our city. And we've got now the Safer Norwich Board, and they've been a consultee as part of, for this policy. And we discussed this with them at one of the meetings. So we very clearly set out the five guiding principles. And I think I would like to highlight how that puts our residents at the heart of that and the standards we expect. And that's backed up by a significant amount of training that the team has undertaken to really be delivering an excellent service that I'm incredibly proud of and confident that they deliver in accordance with those principles. I think what's very useful and potentially for residents is being very clear what is antisocial behaviour and what's not. And that can often be a cause of contention. And we need to be clear where we can step in and where we can't. But we we're conscious that there are issues that may not fall within the scope of ASB, but actually they're still impacting people's quality of life. And that's something that I hope to bring forward later. We'll be looking at actually about some work around good neighbours. This, as a policy is setting out, being very clear what residents can expect from us, and what we'll be, how we'll be working. Another area I'd like to highlight would be around antisocial behaviour in communal areas by, or by unknown persons. And this can be a really challenging area and something we've struggled with in the past. But that we, I think it's crucial that we're acknowledging this, and that this work on this becomes as part of more a partnership approach, where we're working with the police and others. And we'll continue to do so. And we've seen some really positive improvement in the way we engage with partners across the city. I think it's very useful for residents that they would see the process we follow and what they can expect. And I hope that they, and I'd be pleased that they can hold us to account against what we put in this policy, because I'm confident in how we deliver it. So I think it's, I bring it to use the next step in what we're doing around community safety, and having that very clear expectation of what people will get from us. And so, yeah, I recommend this to Cabinet.
Thank you very much. It's a recommendation on page ninety-five. So first of all, are there any other, any questions or comments from colleagues on the report? If there are none, I'll move to opposition leaders. James?
Yeah, thank you. First comment I wanted to make is I'm very pleased to see a reference in here to effectively closing the loop, the end of a period of antisocial behaviour and feeding back to the community. I personally have previously been on the receiving end of anonymous letters being sent to my home address from people in, in, in the community who were not happy with the way, they weren't hearing back from the antisocial behaviour was dealt with. So I'm actually really pleased to see that that, that is in there. And the only question I have was relates to, I think it's a really good, really good draft. I just wonder what's behind the nine-month hiatus between when the consultation and stuff happened and getting this report to us or to you today. Thank you.
I think we've, we've planned to bring it several times. There was these things called elections mainly that got in the way. There was about being very clear initially of what we've got back from the consultation. Was there anything we need to consider? And I think I wanted to bring this once in terms of be very clear. And it's been a very careful process. And I think that's been something we've done through all the work with the ASB team about being very clear. We've got to get this right, because it has such a significant impact on people's day-to-day lives. I know, having had ASB in the house next door to me, dealing from the property, I know what it's, I get that. And that's why we've, this has to work for residents. But yes, nine months, it has been a work in progress. I would say also, we've had some changes in terms of senior leadership within the service area, which, yeah, that also people bedding in. But the election was the significant thing in that.
Okay, thanks, Beth. Lucy, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to say thank you for it as well. And it's good to see it here. And I'm sure councillors have dealt with a lot of very intractable and difficult situations for people. And the team are really good as well. They, so they deserve praise for what they do, and everyone does you do too. So working with the antisocial behaviour officers and the manager of the department is really good, has been positive for a lot of councillors, in assisting residents with a lot of helpful formal referrals given to them, or advice how to access different services offered by the council or an external body. So it is a partnership approach. But we were wondering if the website could be updated with some of those more detailed advice on pathways, and a list of those other services, which can offer support. So people don't have to, residents can be aware of them, and they don't have to, and seek to access them straight away, rather than having to wait to go through the process with us.
I think access to that kind of information is always crucial. But I think it's not just in this area that it's, from previously on the health and wellbeing board, I, we talked about this there as well. And it comes up in every forum, that keeping up to date sources of that information is crucial. We can explore what we will share. And I think it's about making sure we've got a robust way of keeping up to date. That's the crucial thing. Because they want to share things that then aren't going to be helpful and more challenging. So I'd rather have, we can explore how we do that. But it is having pathways to information that make sure people always get accurate and relevant and current information, rather than sending them down winding paths that won't get them anywhere and then cause more frustrations.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, are there no other questions or comments? We've got the recommendation on page ninety-five to approve the antisocial behaviour policy twenty twenty-four. Is there a proposal? That's Beth. Is there a second? Okay, Claire, all those in favour? Thank you very much. That's unanimous. So we'll move on now to item twelve, the Norwich City Services Limited Business Plan twenty twenty-four to twenty-seven. That's on page one one three. We're being joined by colleagues from the company. Welcome.
Thank you.
And I'm down to introduce this. So first of all, the purpose of this paper is to propose the approval of the NCSL Business Plan twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven. The recommendations to approve the plan and agree the responses to the scrutiny committee's recommendations, which are contained in appendix three. The report notes the history of the formation of the company and the transfer of services into it from Norse in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. The council inherited significantly underperforming services, which it was acknowledged will be challenging to begin to address, which would take about three years to start to show results. In July twenty twenty-one, the council established a shareholder panel to oversee the relationship between the council and NCSL. Each year, NCSL is required to present a business plan for approval by Cabinet, setting out its objectives for the forthcoming year and how it intends to deliver them. This includes key performance metrics and financial analysis. The draft business plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty-seven was presented to the shareholder panel in January of this year. In response, five recommendations were made to the NCSL board and officers committed to working with the company on five further matters, four of which have now been completed, and one of which is in progress. The business plan was received by scrutiny committee in July twenty twenty-four, and its recommendations, as I say, are attached as an appendix to the report. In parallel, in twenty twenty-three, the shareholder panel supported the commission of a governance review by local partnerships, which produces national guidance on the management of council owned companies. The action plan which resulted from this review is being implemented by the company, and progress is being reviewed by the shareholder panel. A progress report will be presented to audit committee later this month. The report looks separately at the two service areas provided by NCSL. On environmental services, there is a table at appendix one, which provides annual comparative data. The headline is that the work of officers and NCSL to drive improvements to performance and efficiency has seen significant improvement over the last year, including one hundred percent of tree works meeting or exceeding response target windows throughout the year, sharps removal improving from ninety-three percent to a hundred percent, and dog fowling removal improving from ninety-six percent to a hundred percent. Completion of street cleansing schedules has improved from a baseline of sixty-five percent to eighty-five percent at the end of the year. And then finally, the completion of a first full autumn hedge cutting programme. On the repairs and maintenance side, there is also a table showing comparative performance data over twelve months. Successes and improvements have included a significant improvement in customer satisfaction by twelve percent from sixty-one percent to seventy-three percent, a significant improvement in managing emergency repairs, as well as other service metrics, by twenty-one point nine percent from seventy-six point eight percent to ninety-seven point seven percent. Improvements in complaints handling too, in quarter four, ninety-five percent being completed in target time, with an average response time of five days, and a reduction of forty-one percent in the number of overdue works. It should be noted that despite these considerable improvements in the repairs and maintenance service during this twelve-month period, which I believe deserves cross-party recognition of this significant achievement, we are challenged by much new legislation introduced to the sector, including the Building Safety Act and the introduction of community standard. This is coupled, coupled with a significant skill shortage in the construction sector in the county, and this may impact on the further delivery of improvements. However, please be assured that the council and the company are working closely to address these challenges. Colleagues, I would again stress the very significant improvements in performance and service delivery by NCSL over this twelve-month period. And I would like to thank the management and staff for their hard work to achieve this. I'd also like to thank the shareholder panel for their hard work in overseeing these performance improvements. The bottom line is that these service improvements directly affect our residents in a positive way. And that is why it is so important to continue the journey and to be as ambitious as possible in our aspirations for the company. And I commend this business plan to you. Well, we do have representatives there from, from the company. Bob, is there anything you'd like to add? Oh, oh, I beg your pardon, there's Hetty on the, on the screen. Hattie, sorry, Hattie on the screen.
Thank you. So first of all, hello. First of all, thank you for asking us to come along today. And my apologies, I can't be with you in person. We're really proud to present the business plan to the Cabinet. It's been a lot of hard work that you've just outlined beautifully for us, both from our leadership and our staff, all of our staff, but also your officers to achieve the progress so far. We, the performance has improved, the money has stabilised, the governance has strengthened. But we have lots more to do. And those are set out very clearly in the business plans for year two and three. We are on the road to achieving all of that. And we are working very nicely in partnership with, with, with the, the council's officers. And that's a real pleasure for us. We are very happy to answer any questions that you have on the business plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Hattie, live via satellite beaming into us. So are there any comments or questions from cabinet members? No, everybody's content. Good. Opposition leaders, James?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the, the cast of thousands that appeared before the scrutiny committee in July. I think it was a really useful discussion and, and series of, of questions that there, that were largely strategic. A few, there was a brief period where we went a bit operational, but got it, got that back on track again. I have, I have one question. It relates to the NCSL responses to the scrutiny recommendations, and actually the one that's been pushed it back in the direction of the council. And that relates to the appointment of the Chair of Audit and the Chair of Scrutiny to the shareholder panel. Is that a decision for Cabinet? Or is that a decision for full council to make that appointment? Thank you.
I'm going to defer to Emily on the governance point.
Thank you, Chair. The appointment to the shareholder panel has not been reserved to the full council. Therefore, it falls within the executive functions, and therefore it is a cabinet decision.
Okay, fine. So we will need to come back to that in that case. Okay. Any other questions, Lucy?
Thank you. Yeah, it's another point on the scrutiny recommendations. I understand we'll go below the line on the business plan as well. So there'll be another chance to ask a question. Is that right?
Anything which is below the line, I'll make a note that we're going to go below the line.
But, but this is on the scrutiny recommendations which are above. So on pay parity, on page one, two, four, it says, in the main, NCSL roles are not comparable with roles in Norwich City Council. And the council's current pay and grading structure was not designed with these roles in mind when it was established. It's my understanding that workers, when they moved over to Norwich City Council, were promised parity. And then when that was not forthcoming, to work towards parity. That's where that came from, that recommendation. So the recommendation was that the business plan demonstrates a clear pathway to pay parity between NCSL employees and Norwich City Council employees. So the question is, when was the current pay and grading structure of the council established?
So I think first of all, my understanding is a misnomer that parity was ever offered. I think there's an ambition as it becomes affordable to improve terms and conditions. And certainly that's the nature of the conversations I've had with the trade unions have confirmed that, that there's a, a journey that we're on, and terms and conditions will improve as, as the company's performance permits that. I think the, the issue about parity being promised, I think is an old argument that certainly predates me, and perhaps based on previous misunderstandings. But that's a discussion that we have constantly, we have with the company and we have with unions. And we're all agreed that we are on a road to improving terms and conditions as and when that is possible. I don't know whether, Bob, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, so I can tell you that just yesterday, we met with the unions. Pay parity was not part of that conversation. It's much more about, well, okay, so we've honoured commitments that were made in terms of the pay agreement two years ago. We have, we're honouring the commitment in terms of job evaluation, and the union are closely involved in that process. And the council is aware that there is a potential impact on costs that were associated with the job evaluation process, and we'll figure that back as part of our discussions for contract sums at later time points.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. I mean, certainly from the meetings I've had. From the meetings I've had with the unions since I've been leader in the minutes, so the, those meetings confirm it, that we are talking about improving. Um, that we are talking about improving terms and conditions as that becomes affordable. There's never been any um um suggestion uh that it would be um reasonable or affordable to achieve full parity. And certainly in terms of full parity and terms and conditions, that's never been requested of me. And I'll say that again because every time I say it, someone comes and says to me, is that really true? Well, I wouldn't say if it wasn't true, and if I didn't have the minutes to prove it.
I've got some other, I've got, I've got alternative minutes, I'm afraid, on that, but there you go. That's why I'm asking.
No such thing as alternative minutes, because you've not been in, you've not been in the meetings with the unions that I've been in, so let's just.
Been into the meetings of the union.
Well, the me, I think.
But my question actually was, when was the current pay and grading structure of this council established? So it's it's not to do with that necessarily.
Emily?
Thank you, Chair. Um, the council has signed up to the JNC pay and grading structure. Um, but I unfortunately don't know off the top of my head at what date we actually signed up to that. So we'll take that question away and come back to you.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. So if there are no other questions or comments, um the recommendations are on page.
Chair, um I suggest perhaps at this stage we go below the line to in order for Hattie and Bob, um if there are any questions.
That's a very good point. Let's do that. Um, so let's um let's exclude the public. So the uh, the resolution we have to pass is on page four. So we pass that and then we come back.
Yes, Chair.
And we switch off the the broadcast. Thank you for that. That's really helpful. Okay, so um. We do. So um I'll propose that we go into private session. Do we have a seconder, Beth? All those in favour? Unanimous. Right, okay. So if we switch off the recording. Now we go back to the the recommendations are on that will be page one, one, three. The recommendations are uh on page one, one, three, that the NCSL Business Plan twenty twenty four to twenty seven be approved, and that the responses to the scrutiny committee's recommendations in uh appendix three be agreed. There is the question that was raised by um James, because I think the um the item on the scrutiny recommendations about the chairs of audit and scrutiny, it looks ambiguous to me. Um, so I think we need to bring that back. Um, so we will, we'll bring that back. If we can bring that back to the next meeting, that would be helpful because we need to make that decision. Personally, I think we need to get that done. Okay, um, so I proposed it. So all those, is there a seconder? Beth, I'll take this time just at random. Uh, all those in favour? Thank you. That's unanimous. So we now move on to item thirteen, which is the supply of enforcement agents and debt collection services to Norwich City Council. It's on page, the report's on page one hundred and twenty-five. Um, it's a key decision, and it's councillor Kendrick. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Well, obviously, um this city council is a large collector of money, isn't it? Whether it be from council tax, business rates and sundry other uh charges, fees and et cetera. And obviously, in that connection, we do need uh an enforcement agents and a debt collecting service to actually he- help us to achieve the income that we need to do so. And it has, it has been agreed that the award of the contract for the provision of enforcement agent debt collection services will be given to Jacobson Maston Holdings Limited. Uh, they both have a proven track record and also will compute, uh, we can all be assured that they will pursue um it all, debt collection and enforcement in a ethical and proper manner. So I would very much recommend uh the recommendations before you propose that.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. Paul, are there any questions or comments from? Yes, Adam.
Thank you, and thank you for, I was also consulted on this award. Uh, I'm satisfied that Jacobson Maston uh offer the most added uh social value to our residents uh with a number of um their plans set out under paragraph eight. Uh, they will be contractually obliged to comply with our existing non-commercial debt policy. Uh, and we'll also be contractually obliged to dynamically align with our new emerging debt policy mid-contract, including the forthcoming vulnerability profile for residents. I'm so happy to support.
Thank you very much, Adam. I'll take it there for that you're seconding the report, if I may. Thank you. Right, any other kinds of questions from cabinet colleagues? No, um, opposition leaders? Yes, Lucy?
I'm just interested to know if there's been any consultation with debtors or people that are affected by the services, how they're delivered, or charities active in that sector as part of the.
So on, yeah, I think. Um, no, we haven't actually consulted. Um, but what we did ask for in our um tender was for um some testimonials. Um, and interestingly, there were some, some really quite good ones from members of the public where um the enforcement agents have actually, because of the way they now have to act, which is very different, the, you know, they are regulated. Um, they actually were thanked by people for actually the way that they've dealt with them, the way they've supported them. So um there is an awful lot of work that they do before we even get to um actually adding additional costs. So we're very keen to work with the new suppliers on the pre-compliance stage where they will still try and make contact with debtors before putting fees on. Um, we will work, once this is approved, with them to actually um make sure that we, you know, we can get the best for them. But um the way they deal with stuff now is it's, it's, it was quite amazing to actually read the the bids. Um, you know, they they've got voice recognition now, so when people maybe say something, if you, if they're calling and somebody says do I'm feeling suicidal, straight away, it will go to a welfare team. The welfare team will deal with that. They're all trained around that, um, you know, to listen out for those things. So, yeah, very different service to how it's provided previously. Um, as I was reading through all the bids, I did curse under my breath a bit for not putting a word count on. But actually, what it did do was allow me to read and really understand what the provision will be. Um, and how, like I say, how very different it is and the support that they will give for our residents um around this area. So hopefully, um, yeah, we'll get, we'll get a really good service.
Adam, you wanted to add something?
Yes, I think it's also clear that in terms of Jacobson Maston, their bid, that they'd done the research into the welfare rights and and debt support uh sector in in Norwich, what was in place and how they'd uh work uh with them uh via referrals. So I think that was, you know, particularly impressive about their bid.
Hmm, thank you, Adam. Okay, so we've got the recommendations on page um one hundred and twenty-five. They've been proposed and seconded. Um, so can I see all those in favour? Thank you very much. It's unanimous. Um, we now move on. This is a key decision on page one hundred and thirty-five. This is the development site pipeline. Um. Recommendations on page one hundred and thirty-five. Uh, Paul is a cabinet member who's going to introduce this initially, and Andrew, welcome to the table.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair. Obviously, the issue of the of housing is one of the most important I think that our country faces and indeed our city as well. Obviously, to provide that additional housing, we need to a pipeline of development sites. Now, obviously, when it comes to the detail that is in the uh green papers in part two, for obvious commercial sensitive reasons, so this, the element within the first section and on the white papers is really of a general nature. I would be quite happy to leave it to Andrew to perhaps go into further detail if any question, members have any questions.
Very wise, Paul. Okay, uh, Andrew, do you have any um comments you wish to add to the report?
I I think just to add that this is a follow-on to a report that was brought before members in twenty twenty-two, where we've done some further detailed work to the sites, have much greater understanding around values and what we might be able to deliver on the site. We're happy to take any questions from members.
Brilliant, thank you. Um, there's an exempt um report as well. Um, so first of all, are there any common questions or comments from cabinet colleagues? No, um, opposition leaders? James?
Thank you. I have a question that relates to the exempt appendix. However, unless anyone desperately wants to talk about, to go below the line, I'm happy to phrase it in a way which doesn't necessarily deal with any detail, but might get a sort of generic answer, so.
You could try that to start with. Um, obviously, we are going to go back below the line for the investment partnership uh paper, but on the other hand, Andrew might want to get home, so.
Just my, my, my question is, there is, there is a site in there which was, is in the the consideration now that was in the previous uh report, but I remember you know, maybe up to a decade ago was also being considered. So my, I guess my question is, how confident are we, are we that these sites are likely to have something happen, or is it, could it just continue, continue, continue?
Thank you.
We are confident in these sites. Um, we've done substantial amounts of work with both Bidwells and with Ingleton Wood architects to see what the art of the possible of the schemes are. We've looked at the values. We've got that market intelligence now. So I'm confident that the fifteen sites or fourteen now that we've um withdrawn one are deliverable in whether that's deliverable by the council, whether it's deliverable by putting them out to the market. We're confident that they they are in a position now ready to go.
Brilliant. Okay, thanks, James. Thank you for that. And that was very well phrased. Lucy?
Thank you. That I have got a question that probably would be better, better below the line, but um, but I've got this one as well about um open space land, not being specific, but um it ha- obviously, some of these biodiversity net gain has come um to become much more of a viable option recently, and will continue to become more viable um in terms of payback. Um, the, and this has been a long while in the making. Um, have we explored keeping open space land and using it for biodiversity net game schemes? Seeing that many developments will increasingly need those off-site offset?
If, I can just say that it's something that the council is exploring, um primarily through our planning process. We are, but we are involved in that in terms of looking at what land we have available, what the business case may be for developing biodiversity credits. So it's something that's in the early feasibility stages that we're looking. You may be aware that we've recently appointed a biodiversity officer in the environmental strategy team, and it's something that we're working closely with them on.
Thank you for that, Andrew. Okay, so um the recommendation is on page one hundred and thirty-five. Uh, Paul is proposing. Do I have a seconder, please? No, Emma, thank you. Right, all those in favour? Thank you very much. It's unanimous. Um, so we now come on to the second exclusion of the public. So um just to propose the um the uh wording which is on page four, I propose that. Do we have someone to second that? Emma, right, uh, all those in favour? Right, unanimous. So we're going to switch off the uh we'll say goodbye to our many viewers. Until next time.